You're welcome to say something as we go along.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, we have student representatives. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Yes. I am Emily Martin. I am senior now. I'm a senior.
I'm Eva Cameron. I'm a junior representative.
Josh, the old senior represents?
Did you guys talk to Stephanie about things you might want to talk to us about?
And we have a report here that we've worked on over the past week with events that are going on at the school. And we also got, we also requested you be able to talk a little bit about habits of work. So, we prepared to give a little feedback on that too tonight.
All right. And the student reps guys, I think probably already all know that they're looking for feedback from us if there's anything that we would like to have them add to their report.
Yeah, absolutely. They want our feedback.
All right. So, thank you for welcoming them.
Thank you. Okay, so, as for senior class information, it feels very strange to say that.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We are starting with our senior walkathon and the date has been set for October 19th. The cause that we're walking for is teen depression and suicide prevention. And we had a class assembly about a week ago with a few different kind of organizations or causes to walk for that all, you know, each had a lot of importance to certain students. And we voted as a class through a survey and it was announced that we're walking again for teen depression and suicide prevention. And we're working on potentially incorporating the senior class from Nami and Middlebury, Canadian High School as well to walk with us. It would be the first time that the three schools have come together for this event. We are still working out the logistics. Lee Shory is very excited and our class president has been in touch with their class presidents and it seems the communication lines are open and I think there's some interest there. So, it's very exciting.
And I agree with the principals of the other schools as well to expect an invitation.
Fantastic. So, it'll be exciting. And also seniors are setting up their senior meetings with our team guidance counselors to go over their plans for the future, whether that be college, working, taking a year off, going to the military. And as for college, the early decision deadline is November 1st and regular decisions January 1st. And the SAT, if students are going to retake it or take it for the first time this fall, the first date is October 3rd. And now several of our students took the ACT this past Saturday to send, you know, to bump up scores. And, let's see. NHS applications will be due September 22nd. We have a huge group of applicants this year, both juniors and now seniors, which is great to see a lot of students with a 90 J or higher. There were only four existing NHS members myself and three other seniors. So, we will all become officers of whatever position by the end of the month.
I mean, I know it was pretty close too because I was talking to a buddy of mine and he was 30th in the class and he has an A and a point two.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm 23rd and I have an A and a point three. So, we do have a mix in. Third of our class, senior class, right there. So, it's pretty exciting for all of us, I think.
Yeah. We definitely have a lot of very dedicated, very smart individuals who have possibly succeeded.
You're right.
So, for extracurriculars this year, musical has just started off. We've had auditions and callbacks last week and the cast list has been posted on the website and most likely somewhere around the school near the music department. The dates for that are November 19th, 20th, and 1st. And as for academics, the ad drop period closed about two weeks ago and students are well into their first semester of academics, enjoying their new classes. With that, the new system of habits of work has been implemented this year and so those grades are separate from the academic number grade, which is causing quite a bit of discussion in school.
Yeah, we'll stop there. Also, for students who are taking classes at Middlebury College, I think we are, there are a few students that we have to, it's true, their classes for this semester start this Wednesday. So, they are in classes at the high school here and they will transition into, you know, whatever class they're taking over there.
All right, so just school, basic school information. Homecoming will begin Friday, September 25th with a flow grade through town, all the folks. We're doing the four seasons for the four classes, senior classes that go out winter, so be prepared to see the wedding flow from the seniors. We'll have a bonfire after the parade, a big bonfire with a bunch of pals staying in the back of the school, not to leave, some fire here. It's gonna be awesome. The dance will be held Saturday night, page 11, probably Monday.
Night is always there.
Right. So, we're gonna keep sports kind of shorter this year. So, homecoming games will be held Saturday, the 26th, as normal. Boys and girls have both won and lost several games this year. The girls just won last night, 4-1, so that's pretty good. They're up in Mississippi tonight. Football program, it's not going as well as hoped. They lost Saturday again, a little bit of a blowout. It's all right, they'll get there. And then basketball, the gym is starting as well, so we're getting ready for the basketball season. If you take a look, walk out to the fields, you'll see the new dugouts for baseball. This has been a whole, a whole better place. Even a storage shed has been added to the old side dugout, so there's now extended about 10 feet. So, there's a little shed where you can put all your equipment so it doesn't get confused or lost. So, hopefully that will help out and that'll be a pain this week. Bye. Thanks, folks.
Oh, that's perfect.
Thank you.
One more time.
Yeah, so Josh and I both attended, I attended Girl State, Josh attended Boy State this past June. I just wanted three girls to go and four boys went. So, Girl State and Boy State is a mock local and state government and it's held, Girl State was at Vermont Technical College and it was a week long right after school got out. So, elections are held. We've had a governor who actually I have stayed in contact with and I'm really good friends with now, lieutenant governor, all the way down to town meeting, kind of official positions. So, it was wonderful. I met a lot of really smart, very involved girls from all over the state of Vermont. We made a trip to the state house on our last day there and participated in like an active senate vote and everything. It was really neat. Madeline Kuhnan, the former governor, came and spoke with us. So, it was an awesome experience. Not a lot of sleep, a lot of activity. So, I think everyone kind of went home tired, but it was, I would encourage all junior girls in the future to apply. I think boys are selected, girls have to apply, but it was a fantastic program.
And if you have gotten, seen the news, you've known one way, we can emphasize a little bit, that Josh was elected to the position of attorney general at his Boy States. And part of that was receiving a scholarship to Middlebury State College. Josh was one of four very well qualified candidates. Quite an honor.
Yeah, so it's pretty much, Boy State's almost, it's a little more than laid back than Girl State. We're more involved, we're not more involved, we're just as involved in the government aspect. We had town meetings, we went to the state house as well where our elected officials met, our lieutenant governor met Phil Scott. And then our, unfortunately, Governor Shumlin wasn't there, so our governor couldn't meet Governor Shumlin. But we ran the mock trial through the state house, just like Girl State. We had a little more sports.
Yeah, you guys said more laid back.
Yeah, we, there was, there were sports involved, so the boys got to be a little competitive for about three hours a day and blew off some steam, but no, it was a great experience and I'm happy I went and totally changed my whole outlook on meetings in general. You learn a lot from it, so it was great. I loved it.
Did they talk about how long it's been going on? Because I remember, I graduated from high school, it's a high school of 77, and Boy State, and Girl State was, you know, well established at that time and it was quite an honor at that time. It was, it was a competitive process at that point and it wasn't gross applied, it was voting, but so it's, it's, well, 39 years.
Girl State has been, I think this was like their 70s, I can't, quote me on that, somewhere in the 70s.
Yeah, there you go.
There we go.
We got really attractive green pillows, so.
We got sweatshirts and t-shirts.
But it was, it was a really neat experience and I think, you know, any upcoming junior should apply for it. So, as for.
Do you still elect representatives to a national organization?
Yeah, there's Girls Nation and Boys Nation. For girls, you had to, if you wanted to attend Girls Nation, write an essay and apply to go there. I want to say our lieutenant governor and another girl, we don't think held an official position on a state level, were selected to go.
So, it's like, it's still set up as a national government?
Yeah, we sent two, two boys and two alternates. Thomas DeMag from South Burlington actually won the whole thing. He was lieutenant governor of Boys Nation. But no, we sent two boys and then there's two alternates elected and there's a few after that.
That being vice president of Boys Nation?
Vice president.
How is that?
Thank you.
Sure.
So, as I'm sure all of you know, in, I think, and Ms. Taylor, do seventh and eighth grade have habits of work as well? So, seven through 12, it's a new, not a new grading system, but kind of in addition to the grading system that we have had for, you know, forever, the number grading system. So, now homework and participation and habits of work are excluded from that number grade and they're placed in a different category. And there's below standards, meaning exemplary, need, it's ed.
Not, not progressive.
Not progressive, meeting, and exemplary, which on power school are separated as well. So, now the number grades that we have are just class projects, quizzes, tests.
You continue. I add a slight amendment to what you just described.
Okay, and this is what we have kind of understood from it. I didn't know, Josh, if you want to.
If you want to, if you want to talk about here, what you have to say about.
It's not that homework is not included. It's completion of homework, timely completion of homework and on time completion of any work is part of the habits of work, is perseverance, you know, those things that contribute to being successful outside of school. Homework is included in the summative portion, the graded portion, if it's corrected. So, if homework is actually corrected, what we're trying to eliminate is just the giving of a grade, say a hundred, for just completing the work without actually having to check for accuracy or understanding. So, if homework is graded, you get an 85, you get a 90, whatever, and it actually showing your progress towards meeting the standards and the content, that's part of the regular numeric grade, just completing it. We're trying to get rid of the, you know, just the check mark, check plus, that sort of thing that can actually sway a grade in a student's favor and detract from the true picture of how well they understand a concept. Now, hundreds just for doing the homework? I mean, we want to reward that, that's a good practice, but we don't want the hundred to creep the grade up or slightly increase the grade and then sort of hide or muddy the fact that you may have missed a big test and to show that you missed a particular element or an important standard. So, that's, that's the distinction we're making, which is a step towards proficiency based grading, which as you know, is part of Vermont State law.
What are those three categories that we carved out? It's participation, participation, engagement. So, for instance, in chorus, we used to get weekly participation grades. Now, that's excluded from that number grade and put in our habits of work. Also, a key thing about this new system is for sports. Students are no longer, we used to have the pass, fail, whether or not you could play. So, if you did not have a 70 in a class, you could not play in the game. Now, that is determined by your habits of work grade. So, you could be failing a class numerically, but have, you're meeting habits of work standards and you'll still play in the game. Or vice versa, you could have a 90 in the class and not be meeting habits of work standards and not play. I think from a. From a student's standpoint, especially as a senior who's looking at applying to colleges, I understand where the habits of work is coming from and I think that, you know, it is smart to, like Ms. Taylor said, a lot of students use that hundred as a buffer for their grade, you know, for homework. I see a lot of my classes now, students don't do homework anymore because they don't get a grade. And because if you don't play sports, this habit of work grade really doesn't matter to them in their mind. And for me, I think it's kind of muddied as for transcripts, what I'm going to be sending to college and it's a different, there's definitely a difference between the picture that my grades have portrayed for the past three years and what they will be now because they're separate. It's not submitting one numerical grade that reflects participation, tests, quizzes, all in one.
Lauren, excuse me, I think maybe we should be thinking about a larger presentation to the board.
Yeah.
This is a great conversation, I'm not trying to shut it down, but there's some context and there's some background information that's really important for the board to be educated about and kind of the future where we're going with standard case grade.
Okay, so, whether they're more next in general.
Great, yeah.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, please.
I mean, you've always talked about how you wanted the vibe of, so if I don't, if it's okay if I hear the vibe of this for the students, I mean, the senior class at least.
Yeah.
Stressful.
Yeah.
Because we're used, there's nothing, we understand that it has to be changed by 2020, I believe, something like that. It's, what Emily was saying is getting, changing your whole aspect of our three years, two, two from middle school here, being graded like a different way than all of a sudden changing it to 180. So, those kids that are, that don't test very well, like I know there's some of them out that don't test well, they rely on that homework to kind of boost them up in case they don't do so well in test. They feel like they're out of drive and I feel like we need to bring them back in, so don't try to bomb out on this one. Because I mean, not everyone does well in test, there's some people that, I mean, if you do well in test, you bomb in test, test is 40% your grade, your grade, your grade just drops. So, I feel like when that comes up to the board, when we send out information that maybe we could talk about that too, for those kids that are, you know, that don't test very well. You go on, Tim.
Oh, I know what you're saying. I think there's a, there's a sort of a base understanding and then there's what teachers understand about how this will be applied over the classroom. And I think it's sort of what you're seeing, what you're assuming we could, based on practices in the past and then what will really happen in the classroom.
All right, cool.
We're not going to, we're not going to ding students for changing practice, but it's sort of based on certain assumptions about that there was a standardized way of doing that. Now, you know that not all teachers just give you a hundred for showing a paper that looks complete when they walk around the room and checking. Many teachers actually have been grading that homework and giving feedback right along. So, you're, you're standard of that message. So, you're standardizing some assumption, you're only making some assumptions about something that's totally not true. There was a question about the three categories, until I may have just read them off.
Actually, let's, in the interest of time, we'll, yeah, if you don't want to. Thank you. Joanna.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
So, in terms of the incidental report, it is as presented, I want to just remind board members that there's some really important training coming up. And we have heard from some board members of their interest in registering. As of lately, I sent something around to the board about healthcare plans and a couple of you have already contacted me and we're actually invited to a couple of the association members to go with us. There'll be a meeting in Middlebury on October 1st in the evening where the, where the V-HI will be able to roll out some of their thinking related to help with their plans for the future. So, I think any board member that's interested, even if you're not on the negotiating council, it'd be great to have you, just let us know and we'll register you. I know if you wanted to say a couple of words about training, will I?
I signed up for the initial meeting that's happening in October and that's a really great meeting. If anybody wants to go, I know you guys long-term have formed them, which may be a very eventful, but it tends to be a pretty good meeting. And I'm thinking about the Lake Hurley, I don't know if you need to worry.
Yeah. And then the, the board self-assessment, as you know, we sent out the link for you to complete the survey. I only have three board members, so I did not bring the results to you tonight. We wanted a little bit higher participation, so if you've not filled out the survey, please make sure you do that.
Just a clarifying question. This is the second round of asking, this one is electronic, there was a prior round, so I just wanted to clarify. Did I respond it the first time, do I need to respond this time?
Yes, because we are collating the results online, right? So, it's important.
Have you ever done it the first?
Like a year ago or kind of recently?
Because I don't have yours.
Okay.
All right. If you'd like, Jeff, we will fill it out online for you, but you can get your hard copy version. But we'll, we'll have to delay those results till next month. A lot of, a lot of awards are in the same spot. We don't have a large participation, so I'm just pleased, if you, if you have lost the link, call Lori, she'll reset it to you.
I did today.
Oh, you did. It's in your mailbox.
And it doesn't work on one of these, you need to use one of these.
Oh, is that right?
That's what happened to me anyway. Me too, but I did the second one anyway. I had to figure out how to log in, login to my email account, the right way, because I have all my mail forwarded, we need permission, so I had to figure out how to log in and that took a little while.
There was a thing in your, the supplemental report you wrote about purchase orders and I was wondering. So, what you said is the PO self is going to have a note on it saying.
That the, for the vendor, for the vendors that we pur, we will only process purchase orders with appropriate numbers.
Okay.
So, we, there are too many vendors, we wouldn't miss people, we'd send personal letters out, so we just chose to handle it from that perspective.
I, I, I just, you know, from a communication perspective, I don't know how the vendor is going to get that information. They don't necessarily get the PO. I know, I was thinking that we were going to put a little piece of paper, like I get some from, from some of my vendors, that just says, you know, billing address or whatever, just a little piece of paper says, we're going to be requiring POs, pay attention. And that was just going to be a little piece of paper that went out with all the payments, right? What I was thinking was going to happen.
And we thought that because we did meet some people, we didn't think that that would be as widespread, but the point that you made is a good one. Go back and read that. Purpose is to get the information out to.
To the vendors, yeah.
I think we both.
Okay. Stephanie, anything?
Well, you received my incidental report. I don't have any questions about that. And you also received a follow-up report because, forget we don't meet twice a month, for, to adhere to the policy of 2009 or whatever it is for construction, the plan for, annual plan for sale this year. So, you received that as well to review. So, I don't have anything to add to the report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't know. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Kurt?
Yeah, the 11, the 11. I think we, the intent was to get an idea of what the impact was on the policy. And it seems like we got a list of, a lineary list of things that were going to happen.
Good to see that policy, yeah. Given, given what you know now, it seems like the policy may not speak to our, to the needs, at least from what I see. It asked for, what's the plan for the administration to spend, then not more than 1% of the full budget for repairs and maintenance of the building. And that's sort of what I gave you was the lineary list of things we're going to do for the area and the budget that I think of as repairs and maintenance. Then it goes on, I think the next paragraph to talk about that capital fund. So.
Yeah, there's, there's two things in that policy. I just wanted to mention now and talk about later in committee, how I think that that, that kind of information can flow right out of what the other things that we're working on. So, it may not only be a list of things that we're doing, but also whether it's close to 1% or 100,000 or whatever you want to use for, for the financial indicator. But, you know, having the lineary list is good, you know, but also like to know if it's going to be 2% or 10% or, you know, it's going to be close to 1%. Those kinds of things, so we can talk about it.
Well, that really spoke to my interpretation of the intent of that part of the policy and I was focused on the October 1st.
Very good. And I would have brought this up in our committee meeting if we had had it, but, you know, we didn't, so, thank you.
Is there a copy of that in the public?
The list of things?
Yeah.
How do we deal with incidental reports and public display? I know our minutes go on the website, but do all the other reports as well?
I didn't have that attached.
Because it came as a request following the delivery.
Right, so it wasn't attached with your turn.
Okay. Can we get it posted with the minute meetings?
All of the attachments that we.
Well, it was, it came in a separate email.
No, I mean, when the minutes are posted is when we make sure, get something distributed to you at the meeting or the 94, it doesn't go through your package, it does go on the website.
So, so the answer is within five days from today, right? Or tomorrow.
So, is it just the email? We can send it.
To Kurt's point, we, a couple, I don't know, a year ago, we got a, do you remember this stuff? Can you see it? It's a spreadsheet that breaks out the operations and maintenance, it was the physical plant maintenance schedule.
This now, this is what you were supposed to have sent. There was some, and they were, okay, you reset this as well.
I know.
And we shared, we shared a year ago with you and it's shared with the facilities committee as we started our work this year. I think the minutes say that it was shared with the board, but that's, the minutes weren't out there, it was shared, well, it was shared a year ago when we, when I did the same report last year. And again, it was, it was shared as a live document with the facilities committee.
So, with this facilities committee meeting minutes, this will be available to, this updated, because this is last year's, because I didn't get this year's, but because of the facilities.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we weren't on as we, as we do work. So, it is, although the date is set October 2014, we've made entries to reflect the work that was completed, it was part of bonds and funding as well.
So, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure, I got it all out. So, this will be a public document, is what I'm asking. Will this be a public document?
It is.
Okay.
I think what Stephanie's saying is it's a living document.
Right.
So, to put it on paper makes it automatically obsolete. So, we're, we're making changes to it little by little as things get changed, so.
So, we can use a Google Doc as a.
This is a format that was created by the Vermont Superintendent's Association, it's one that commonly is used, it may or may not meet our needs, it has a lot of categories. It's not a piece of software, it's a word, a term, but, so we entered. So, not the excuses, but, you know, the people in this job don't have administrative support a lot of times, so it's as, as time allows, entries are made. Generally, there's a prompting action, like I have a board meeting, could you make sure that you entered, you know, or can we work together to make sure we do stuff today? So, it's that kind of, it's that kind of work.
You couldn't necessarily go online and see the latest version. Only the day of a board meeting.
Well, we could convert it, convert it to a Google Doc, but again, it's limited to our ability to add, add information along with all the other things we do. to add information along with all the other things we do.
Another question, then, is it necessary for all of the board and all of the public to know right up to the last minute what the facilities committee is doing? Not really. A committee meeting is as public as the board. There's an agenda that's sent out in this meeting. So if we do anything to the facility operating maintenance plan, and it's in the name, so we haven't done it, we're still working on it. Well, we've worked out what the definition is of what we're going to do, which was the last meeting. And we were planning to before this, before the next meeting, October, we'll have another report. Ideally, the systems in this building should have a plan for operation and maintenance. And those operations and maintenance plans should have a cost attributed to them, and that cost should be in the budget. So that's the flow of the information. So it's going to be important for us to have that information that we go through the board prior to, I guess, November, when we have the first draft next year's budget, next budget that we will be presenting to the public. That answer your question?
Do you want to, we can maybe you de-sensuality speaking for this facilities committee? You guys haven't had a chance to meet since the last meeting. So can we just take that as a report, or did you have some other stuff you wanted to say?
Yes, no.
Yes, no.
I answered your first question yes, and your second question no. You have to be careful about how many questions you ask in a row.
I see, I see. All right, Lori?
Lori. I have a follow-up. That's Stephanie.
Stephanie, yes, thank you.
So I wanted to ask a question and hopefully have some conversation at a subsequent meeting. Back in June, you did report to us on the post-graduation plans of our class of 2015.
Yes.
So my question is, does the school have a goal with respect to the percentage of the graduating class that's going for further training? This isn't gotcha. I'm trying to figure it out, and here's why. Here's what I was struck by.
You shifted courses in the middle of the stream, and I was still thinking about...
You were talking about building.
Building and facilities.
Right. Imagine that, I want to talk about education.
I missed the segue. Sorry.
So here's the reason for my question. We talked about it in June, we really haven't had a chance, you know, we didn't meet in July. August's meeting was fairly constricted. You know, when I look at the numbers that were reported out, it's a pretty low percentage of our class, graduating class, that's gone on for further education. Forty-nine of 92 graduates enrolled in two or four-year school, two in military, so that's 55%.
We've had as high as, I think in my recent past reviewing the profiles, I think we were as high as maybe 65% one year. It really depends if it's co-work, co-work.
But I think your question is, what you're raising is an important subject, Jeff, because we are in the business of educating students, and the whole purpose of flexible pathways is to provide more opportunities for kids to be successful and to be college-ready. But it also says career-ready, and we believe that higher education, no matter what path students take, is important, is important in that goal. So does the school have an explicit goal in achieving that graduation rate? I see that it's written, but I will tell you that it's important and something that we need to pay close attention to and align how we're educating our students and the changes that we need to promote a higher percent of kids that are participating in education.
So in fairness, there may have been some students, because you had one category that was working or deferred, and maybe there's some breakout there that would change the percentage.
I think the DESAC study gives us that, we went on, maybe not the, maybe the problem you had.
Prior. I think in terms of our communication to the public about what our achievements are, this is a really important piece for us to be able to speak to. And we spend an inordinate amount of time talking about budgets and paper cuts and purchase orders, and this is really, the result of our effort is, you know, how are our students doing when they leave here? And I'm interested in having a conversation about what the goal is. I was struck by that.
You know, there's so many elements and facets to that. There's those that are prepared and go on, there are those that are actively prepared, but for a variety of reasons that have little to do with what happens in this building, cannot go on, or whatever, and a lot of that is economic, or, you know, financial. I know every single student gets the same kind of counseling from members of our school counseling office. So all students are encouraged to do that. They, there's a whole support system for the students to access the kind of counseling that they need, and, you know, DESAC or whatever, for financial resources, and also just help with navigating the process. And we have two seniors here and a junior who can speak to how difficult that is. It's certainly gotten more difficult than it was when I was applying to colleges in some states and houses. But our support system is right there, there's half of our support system right there, as well as the middle school. We start college visits in middle school, we're taking students out of campus, so it is a focus of everything we do. It's a big conversation. I think a lot of it in this community is, I guess, is economic.
Is this possibly, I'm sorry, did I...
You, yeah, Dr. Ryan.
Help yourselves.
You can ask about the building, or you can ask...
No, I'm going to follow up Jeff and just say that it is a very interesting topic. I don't, I don't hear that as alarming numbers, just given that I know that some students who aren't going to college or are not going to military are still doing very valuable things. But it sounds like the kind of conversation that should play out as part of our vision discussion, right? And so instead of kind of talking about it in this room, if we talk about it with the community, get some resonance from them, what they have to say, that would be good.
It is the focus of ECU S and X77, that students are prepared, they're the way to do this, to make sure that they are leading their proficient in content knowledge and the skills to be successful. And that feedbacks to the conversation we had already was, you know, it does a, there's a grade that includes just a certain mark for doing your homework, whether or not you actually did it or completed it to the best of your ability, you know, contribute to or detract from a whole understanding of what your understanding of the content is. The grade should communicate how well a student knows and understands the designated content in an area, and we're trying to pull those other complicating factors out of there, so we know what the grade is.
You just switched questions.
I agree, I agree. That was larger presentation. It seems like there were more graduates that were academically qualified for advanced education than actually went. As you said, there are a whole mess of factors involved. But if we made as a base goal that we will always try to achieve a greater percentage each year than the previous, then we would always be striving to improve. Is that a reasonable thing outside of a special committee that's working on that specifically?
Yeah, I think you can also always strive for a higher goal. I'm just wondering how that, what that might change with, you know, the way that the school counseling department supports students, and I think you might want to address that question to Susan and...
I can't say that there was dramatic increase in the number of students who took advantage of student enrollment opportunities, taking a college course that's been so far by the state funds from 2013, 14, 14, 15 last year. That's dramatic increase. And that's a gauge, a good gauge for saying, students are ready for college. The, what you're talking about in terms of saying it's our goal to have students go to college, giving out a factor that has absolutely nothing to do with the counseling staff or the educators in the building, and that is, can they afford to go? And we're finding, since the economic crash a few years ago, we're finding many more students that walk in to meet with us about college opportunities, that are very aware of their family's financial situations, and are trying to make more responsible decisions. So many students are choosing to take some classes, which doesn't make you a part-time necessarily full-time student that says, they want to continue, but they're unsure of what they want to major in, and they don't want to spend 20,000 to 40,000 dollars in tuition deciding that. So that doesn't play out, it's clearly in our numbers, it's not as sparkly and pretty. But if you want to look at readiness, and you consider dual enrollment increase, I think that's a better gauge. If you start saying, our goal is to get students to go to college, if we were funding every kid to apply to a college, I'm 100% confident I could get 98 to 100% of my students into a college, if we were funding the application. We're not. So I have to say to a family, you need to pay for an application to a school that you may or may not want to go to, and that's where things get a little, you know, wonky, because they're not under our control. Yeah, any more questions?
That's a stunning statistic, though, that I just heard. If somebody were willing to pay the application fee, the $50 or whatever it is per application, our guidance department would be able to get a placement for most every student.
The reality is that if you, in the state of Vermont, if you visit one of your state colleges and you have that private interview, they waive the, they waive the application fee. So that's not, that's not the case in Vermont, that would be the case in outside the state offices.
It's good, you have numbers from when classes leave, but the point is, the question of being prepared to go on to the secondary, another level of education, is more of a factor, do they complete their first semester in college? Do they complete their first year? Are they going back for another year, even if it's a different college? These are, these are more data factors that would be more representative, is the school, if we here doing our job preparing the students to go on. It's not necessarily what choice they make, because there are factors that we in the school cannot have anything to do with. So, I mean, if, I, I remember when I went to school, there was a lot, a lot of kids in my graduating class, we, we had the number, we had, 85% they tried to, tried for secondary education. My, my class went there. Out of the 85, we ended up back in the second year, but there was only 50% of us. Okay? Because kids weren't prepared.
The DESAC report actually did it, and we actually did very well with the fifth and sixth year, and it has that data. It's the only organization that really tracks kids that way. So we did, we exceeded the state, definitely.
I'm just saying, for me personally, I think that would be better reflected if we're doing our job here preparing students to go on.
That was distributed to the board, correct?
Yep, we both said, no. Just throwing a figure out of what we expect, because as the government council has already pointed out, they could, they could get kids to go, be applied to any school, and as John just pointed out, go to the state school, get waived fees, so the registration fee isn't a factor for, and we have several good state schools in this state. So there's other factors that we in this board and in the school really can't have any input in, especially currently with the economic issues that still many of our community members face.
Thank you. Anyone else? I haven't, yeah, the business manager, I didn't intend to jump over the business. She's not here, but I'm happy to answer any questions or receive any feedback from the board concerning the monthly expenditure report. The purpose of the format of the report is to give you something to consider as a consistent way of reporting, and other than that, I should try to answer any questions that you might have. I did not hear from anyone any questions ahead of time, so...
Except for the ones to which you responded.
I did, I'm sorry, I did respond. In your response, I'm sorry, anyone, is anyone else, yes, Jack, go ahead.
So with respect to the current fiscal year, when are state revenues expected?
Actually, as we speak, as we speak, they're due around this time right now. In fact, we just got a very good check from the City of Regents today, too.
And are bills being paid timely?
I, I cannot assure you that right at the table without doing inspection. I believe the ones that I have checked on, yes. We have had some late fees because of some of the bills at the A&amp;W have not been able to be paid in the first cycle because of the assessment to the schools, but I don't really expect that to happen.
So we have a tax anticipation note, I believe, that's due October 1st, so we'll have general state support grants and some of the property tax revenues to type. That's, those are my questions with respect to the current year. I had some for prior year, but please go ahead.
Jeff, do you want to do the prior year, or...
I, and I don't expect you to be able to answer these, but if there could be a follow-up with respect to FY15, I just note that we're showing as revenue what is listed as insurance claim, and I believe that's associated with the damage that occurred, and I didn't know if in fact all of the costs associated with the repairs had flowed through on the expense side. It doesn't look to me as though they did, because operations and maintenance is about on budget, so we didn't budget for those repairs. I don't know how we would have accomplished that. So that was, that was one question. And similarly for FY15, there appears to have been some special ed reimbursement for prior year, I assume that's what that says, PY? That's negative revenue, which would make it appear that, and it was non-budgeted, so somehow there was an adjustment from a prior year?
Correct, yes. There wasn't a ju, we actually received that note from the Agency of Education late in the year, and it was not just for Gen, it was not just the A&amp;W, but it was school systems throughout the state of Vermont.
And we have some anticipated revenue. When does all that sugar off from a date perspective? When do you expect that that picture will be?
The, are you talking about FY15, Scott?
I am.
We should receive word within this month, actually, time you said before. We should receive it before October 1st, because the special report is due on August 15th, and in the next month they adjust, so we will be able to figure out where we are with our revenue picture. Anybody else with questions?
Just, what does VOC mean? VOC?
Vocation.
Vocational reimbursement?
Transportation.
Transportation, okay. That's part of the $187,000 that the state was asking for.
Anybody else?
Joan, I'm just going to, if you can, if you could re-explain the negative revenue on this special ed reimbursement for prior year, I mean, would that imply that we were billed?
No, it would imply that they told us we were getting more revenue than we actually did. Their formula for revenue was off.
Oh, and so that happened, the schools statewide? That's not very cool. Was there any communication from the state as to what happened there, or is this just happened every year that kind of...
No, it does, this phenomenon does not happen every year, but it did in this year.
This sounds like something I would refer to.
All right?
I'm, yeah, no, I appreciate the re-explanation, thank you.
I'm gonna go a little bit more on that same topic. So we budgeted eight hundred and, almost eight hundred and ninety thousand in this fed reimbursement. And we got an eight hundred and ten, but a hundred and eleven of that was prior year. How is it, I mean, that's a huge, even if we didn't have that prior year adjustment, we're still off by seventy-six thousand dollars in reimbursement. How did we get so far off when I know our sped expenses were higher? Do you understand what I'm asking? I do understand, Laurie, and I'm afraid I cannot answer that articulately right now. I have to get back to you.
And then, and then, then there's a prior year extraordinary reimbursement, which was a positive, which was real revenue. That is also in special ed, right? Because that's what that means, extraordinary.
That's right. It's a, it's a standard of, we, if we, if we spend over fifty thousand dollars for a student's program, we get ninety percent reimbursement. So it's the term extraordinary.
Right, right.
And again, we're off almost a hundred thousand. Can you tell us, can you get that to us as well? I mean, no, not now, I don't, I will get that.
I can see how that would happen. I, I do. If, if you had a student that was running under that fifty thousand, if, if these guys budgeted for a certain amount of extraordinary reimbursement, having the expectation of a student that had services needed, that student moved away or something like that, and there was a balance of more students requiring services at the less than or equal to fifty thousand dollar level, then we might not have gotten what we would have expected out of extraordinary.
Right.
And we would have spent more than sped, which is what I'm seeing.
Students also move in and out constantly. Right, and, and I don't, my quest, it makes sense? It's just that the numbers should back that up.
Sure.
Right? So, so we should be able to see, okay, so they, they have two, two hundred and eight thousand is made up of this, 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 and this. We only got this, this, and this. This is the difference, right? And I had one question, and I don't, I'm not sure, this was on FY sixteen. So when we're looking at general instruction, um, general instruction is mostly salaries and benefits, mostly. There are also classroom expenses, expenses such as field trips and supplies and textbooks and so on and so forth. But much of that is, I would expect anyway, maybe I'm wrong, was P, it should have been or more than likely was PO'd at the beginning. Not the field trips, not the supplies, but, but the supplies and the textbooks, those should have already been ordered and encumbered. Actually, not necessarily. No? No. Okay. Because they do that as it goes along?
Well, you know, we're, we're budgeting for events that, um, are, um, determined by enrollment, eventual enrollment. We're, we're on budgeting. We've done a general enrollment of classes, but enrollment changes. So I'll give you an example. I had to order, um, ten additional textbooks in a particular area because enrollment exceeded the amount of textbooks we had. So I hadn't budgeted for that, but I had it in another, in another area. So we just moved some supplies and, and moved into textbooks to support that need. There is some fluidity because events change. Um, if a student goes to a professional development, uh, activity for the summer and wants to change something that they're supposed to do, that's the supply. You know, a lot of it is determined proposals. So middle school said they, you know, they get a subscription week reader for the students. I know that, I checked the budget and I, and I budgeted back. We can encumber that. But a lot of it has to remain somewhat flexible based on the needs of the students and the needs of the teachers. You know, those areas, I think a year ago, I did this, it's about four percent of the general instruction. In every, in every department, those, that area is about four percent. So it, and I don't think it's really the source of the issue and that sort of thing. I mean, I can encumber it, I have to know the vendor ahead of time, I can encumber it. But then if I'm changing, we have to go back and.
It causes resteps.
Yeah.
And then, then your expenditure reports will be different and then the questions come up.
Okay, I mean, you know, the textbook, the tech, it's maybe a thousand dollars in the math department for textbooks. You know, it's not, and that's based on their assumption of certain factors in January for a school year that starts in August.
What I was expecting is, what I was hoping for is a list. That four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars is made up of field trips of fifty thousand dollars and textbooks of a hundred thousand dollars and et cetera, et cetera. That, that's what I was hoping for when I asked. That seems like a big number that's unencumbered and, and that's a reasonable explanation. But if I don't have the numbers to add up to that four hundred and eighty-four, that, that's what feels like not enough of the needs. Does, does that make sense?
Sure.
And extracurricular, the same, the same idea. I, I know there's going to be.
Most of that's officials.
All sorts of officials. It's officials and coaches, and we don't know who we're going to be offering contracts for in terms of coaches. Perfectly, I, I'm expecting that there are reasonable answers to the questions. Well, what I'm asking for is numbers behind them. So if that two hundred and ten is a line item on the extracurricular that says, you know, coaches, that would be easy to check, right? Tell me that's mostly coaches, I should be able to go into the detailed, um, budget and see that, right? Right? Uh, anybody else?
Is the hot lunch transfer line a little wonky? It looks like thirteen hundred and sixty dollars spent July and August, but we're not actually, we're not fucking actually today on a conference and shows online.
It wasn't, that's just a program.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, thank you. Okay. That's the same.
Right, so the burn rate is that.
Right, the actual, the, is the actual.
But that isn't the, that isn't the amount. It's more than that.
We're having an eight thousand dollar total transfer, that's a quarter of. One-sixth.
Yeah, we're paying more than that.
We're paying eight thousand. Making an eight thousand dollar transfer from the general fund to the, um, to the lunch fund to repay.
We wrote a twenty thousand dollar check to the.
Two different.
That, yeah, that's, that is the service for the current year. This is the fund balance that's been, we've been hanging on. It's like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's sitting on our balance sheet of a negative. And we're paying that back out of the current year budget at eight thousand bucks a year.
It started at fifty-six when we first started working on this and.
It's gone from the wrong direction.
Put it at eight.
Other questions? Kurt, I'll give you another chance. Is the list moved?
Uh, we did not meet this month. We're organizing a little meeting before the next meeting.
Have we decided on a date?
Yeah, I think everybody could meet on a Friday. I'll set up a calendar.
All right.
Thank you. So it'll be that Friday before the first Monday?
Right.
I think it's the second.
I just got, since we're doing it in the morning, I just got to put my time at work.
Okay, is that, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I need more notice than, than I allowed myself last night.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Richard, tell us about the number first.
I attended the, our board meeting last Wednesday, um, and we're introduced to the new faculty that is, um, working there this year. And, um, and to a gentleman who's actually, uh, two of them that are actually, the, the Anneford programs are based on, uh, this bill. Got to, got to meet them, which was a good thing, get a face to the name. The only thing that came up far as, uh, that was quite interesting was that, uh, the superintendent was mentioning that, uh, it seemed to be, um, the high schools and, um, it seems to be putting, they have a lot more special needs. Kids are, and their enrollment's up, but they have more special needs. Now, I couldn't get him to, to nail down, I said, I asked him, is that Rogen's included? He goes, well, it's all, all free. I'm just wondering, is his, his, what he was saying is, and forgive me for not understanding what he was talking about, because I'm sure I wasn't, is that it's, it's a way of, high schools pawning off some of the cost by pushing them off, pushing these, these special needs kids?
No, no, that, that doesn't, that doesn't happen. I, we actually have a meeting.
I'm not, I guess, I was kind of confused.
Uh, we're gonna learn a little bit more about that at a meeting that I'm attending next week with the area superintendents, but I am aware that they have a higher than usual number of enrolled students who happen to be on IEPs. I don't know the reason why.
He did neither, and that's one of the things, he, you know how he shoots from the hip, which I, I like, much like you, and that's why I enjoy it, but if, for someone who's still trying to catch up to the moving bus, so to speak, it was a little, I'm a little was taken back. So that's, that was a big concern because it was, you know, a middlebury representative was mentioning, is that because people are, high schools are pushing up because of the special ed stuff, reimbursements being less than it was, um, anticipated? And so it's not that, it's just, it's just a, it's just a quirk and, and because enrollment is a.
Across the board.
Across the board.
Yes.
And, which is a good thing for, for the center. But, but like Lou was saying, it just, the, the, the amount of individuals that would, the IEPs have increased. And, so in turn, they, we fired, um, two more aides for, for the larger programs, like forestry is gonna get, get a separate aide, forestry, and, uh, I think Diesel, they're gonna, she's, the person's gonna work, uh, it's a full-time, but she's doing both, both of those. And then there's another two, two, um, programs are the same thing, another aide got added to the, these are more aides for the economic work, not just, not necessarily the specific technical thing, is to bring in the more rounded aspect of the education that the tech center is trying to do with the kids.
Thank you. Um, finance committee. About, you want to start?
So they have, Southwest Supervise Reunion has an audit committee. Our plan is to disseminate some financial policies for first reading by the Supervise Reunion Board at its October meeting, with the hope that those will then, uh, come to the individual school boards in October, November for adoption in December. We are working through findings and recommendations from, uh, the two thousand and fourteen audits. We've been through that. We're working through findings from the Agency of Education Monitoring, which occurred in April of this year. So we have a very full plate and we're making progress.
Any questions? So, the finance committee, um, before I go on, I'm conscious of you guys, and I'm wondering if, we didn't talk about how long you stay, we tend to go on. This stuff is pretty technical, I just wondered if maybe we should let them go. I don't know what you guys think.
I, I want to speak to that.
Yeah, please.
I believe they are full members of the board.
And they're big boys and girls, and I think we can stay up late.
Being a little discouraging there. I, I think it's important that they stay to get the, a flavor of all the work in the board. Otherwise, it seems like their token representatives reporting on extracurricular activities ends, you know, they'll see you later. So I, if they don't have a full understanding of the issues that you grapple with and that we're asked to grapple with, then I think they, they aren't getting, uh, their role is diminished. I hope you don't mind.
Great, I would, I would absolutely concur with that. Okay, awesome, thank you.
I don't think Eva has the right hope anyways.
Actually, she does.
Okay, so the finance committee, uh, we met today. We looked over, um, expenses and, um, we have a number to, um, have you guys adopt, but it's going to be different, I understand, George. We found a couple of issues. There were twelve thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and ninety-six cents worth of expenditures that the Addison Northwest Supervise Reunion is asking for to be reimbursed for because the grant payments were, the grant requests were not filed in a timely manner. So we've been denied the reimbursement. And we didn't have time to go over that with you, um, today, and so, um, I will entertain a motion to adopt the director's bills and orders for four hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-five cents, which is different from what the, um, SU office has given us, which is four hundred and thirty-eight, three, two, seven, six.
Say again the number we want.
Four twenty-five, seven sixty-six, thirty-five. That's good, that's, yes, sir.
We are actually not there yet.
You're right. You're absolutely right.
With apologies.
No, my, it's my apology. Thank you. All right, so that's the report.
So a good opportunity to be able to talk about it without having to do it through the motions.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, um, Laurie, I'm aware that the finance committee has met four times, um, recently in the last couple of months, and we were told that we're going to get some questions ahead of time. We still don't have those questions. It makes it very difficult to be able to communicate and to be able to, to answer those questions if we don't know what they are. I am concerned that if the questions are getting added along the list, it may take some time with my business manager to research. So I would really like the finance committee to make sure that we get the questions as soon as possible and we can formulate a response. Thank you. Any questions for the finance committee?
So when you, when we get to the point where we move this and we adopt the orders, what you're proposing is that you subtract out that twelve thousand.
Six, ten, ninety-six.
Six, ten, ninety-six, pending figuring out what happened there.
Yes.
So, but payments have been issued, uh.
No.
Payments have not yet been issued.
Checks have not gone out.
We have bills due.
That's right.
We have bills due to vendors, whomever they are, I don't need to know.
The twelve thousand, six hundred and ten dollars, ninety-six cents is to the SU.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's not to a bunch of vendors, it's to the SU.
Okay, so just getting to Jeff's question about timing of payment to vendors, so.
Okay.
All right, that's.
And any other questions, the finance committee?
I have a question.
Yes?
I, I didn't understand what you were talking about in terms of, you know, the grant, can you say more about that?
Um, the SU is asking for payment for reimbursement for grant money that was spent.
By the high school.
By the high school.
That's, there to be an application.
And, and the grant application was, um, submitted late.
By the high school.
By the, by.
By the SU.
I don't, I assume that's the SU that does that, but I don't know. We, we, no assumptions are made. I need to, I need to get some background information.
That's why I don't know, we don't know yet.
We don't know. Okay, but it's the first time I hear about it. So I don't have.
We only saw it this afternoon.
Yeah.
I don't know if I can understand this correctly, so I might be way off topic here. So we spent that, it was twelve thousand, so, so that money was spent without knowing we didn't have. No, okay, I was expecting.
Spent it knowing we had a grant.
Right, yeah. I, I live this world, so I can try to explain that. If you have a grant, there's a period of time to which that grant applies. Let's say it's, you know, December to December. And when that grant is closed, your grantor, in this instance, the state, gives you a certain window to submit your final bills. And if you submit after that period of time, the grantor can say, "Sorry, our agreement was here to hear."
You missed it.
So that's, that may be what happened. It may not. It's something that just popped out, so obviously this is something that needs some lookseeing investigation.
Okay. Anybody else? Update on the H46 study committee, is that huge or? Uh, could be George. George? George, you were in that meeting?
Yes, I was.
Doesn't sound encouraging.
It's not, it's not.
It's not, it's not. There were supposed to be members elected by each of the elementary boards at their last month's meeting, so that they could meet in a preliminary meeting, the beginning of this month, to just kind of get a grasp on where we were going. And then at the individual elementary board meetings this month, they were supposed to appoint the community members that had shown interest that they could work into their, to their plan. Steve Dale stopped here after he made a point of coming back from his vacation. Matter of fact, dropped, his wife dropped him off for the meeting. Joanne was there. Jeff came as a representative of the executive committee, and one would have thought that there would be 10 other people there, but there were only three. And I was, I was really discouraged that we didn't have any more members than that. I was especially discouraged by the fact that there was no one there for that. I would have thought that they would have been there in full force to make sure that we were listening to their point of view. So, we did some things, we got some materials, I've got a, I've got a packet here that, among other things, details the three previous attempts, and I am in the process of reading through those attempts to see if I can glean some knowledge about what went wrong. We do have a, a grant, I assume it's been applied for by now, of $20,000 from the state that will go to pay, hopefully, all of the expenses of this committee, because there are several people that will be employed in different forms there. Steve has retired from his management job, so he is going to be a, a consultant to us. We have legal work to do, so there's going to be lawyer's fees, and who's the other gentleman from?
At Go-Home will be doing the financial analysis.
So, we've, we've got some, some professional people involved, but this is a, a short, compressed process. We have to move a document that we desire to use to the State Board of Education by the 5th of January. So, we may have a couple of meetings a month in the process, but it's just, until then, it's, and then we're done. And then, after the State Board of Education approves, or revises, or whatever, it sends back to us, then Jeff has indicated that the executive board is going to be very active in their communication with the community. But hopefully, we will have established a consensus by the time we get the document written, because we have the board members, the elected members, representatives of the communities, and we have the people who are really interested, who are the community members, which we hope will be roughly five, although in Fairsburg, the thought was that we would have one community member. We were kind of told that we shouldn't have more than two. We ended up electing two as voting members and a member at large. So, we're going to have six people at the table from Fairsburg to try and, and make sure that we have a handle on what's happening, and some input into it. Now, the way this is broken up is that this committee has 10 votes total, so Fairsburg has only three votes, no matter how many people are there. And Virgin's gets five, and Addison gets two. One would assume that the Virgin's votes would have a Waltham and a Pen representative involved, but that is not the way the charge is made, because of the fact that it's a unified district. So, we made some progress, but I, like I say, I was discouraged by the fact that we just did not have, we didn't even have half of us.
I just want to make one, one correction.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to get, it's not a unified district, it's a union district, so it's not unified.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because somebody's watching, they, you're unified.
Yep, okay, yes, okay. Yeah, it's a Union Elementary, yeah.
Joanne Lee intends that then the members of the public will be reviewed by the individual elementary school boards this month?
Yes.
And there's a follow-up meeting scheduled for September 29th, kickoff meeting, those are public meetings, anybody here is welcome to attend and join in the discussion.
Absolutely, and I'm going to, I'm in the process of developing a website with all the materials and the agendas that can be linked to from the front page of the A and W, with some of the supporting information, people can log on, read the documents that the committee is working on.
So we have in fact received interest from members of the public?
We received three members of the public who are interested in the Fairsburg, we received one from, two from Virgin's? Two from Virgin's? We got another one, okay. And two from Addison at this point? And actually, one from Waltham.
I have a third Virgin's person whom I think would be fantastic addition to the committee. I will make sure that Virgin's Elementary Board knows about that.
And make sure that individual, just he nails me, her, his interest, and I, and that evening, the board will be making their selection.
Okay, okay.
Where is it? Here, here.
Six o'clock?
So he knows that's on the way. So I have to get him, I have to get him to communicate with you.
Yes, please.
So Jeff, is there, you were there, is there anything that I forgot or misspoke?
No, I, I don't want it to appear as dour, so the story was that that meeting was supposed to be comprised of all of the board members who had volunteered, and not all the board members showed up.
Is that not true?
Just, in, in a nutshell, yeah, it would have been great if we'd had the full complement, we didn't, but we're assuming they're all going to be there on the 29th, and the members of the public who follow up here, as per the numbers, will be interested.
Steve and Ed are both going to be there?
Steve and Ed will both be there, as I will.
I kind of made an assumption that you were-
Any other questions about Act 46 and what's going on there? Thank you. We'll move on to approval minutes, I will enter the motion to accept the minutes as written for the regular meeting August 19, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Neil, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May's? Approval of bills and director's orders.
There we go.
There, thank you.
I move that we approve bills and director's orders in the amount of $425,766.35. Second.
Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Yes, thank you. Policy matters, second reading and adoption.
I would like to make a motion.
And, what's that?
I move that we have had these policies in our hand for a couple of months, that we approve policies D7, D8, D13, E8, F19, F23, F25, G12, and G13.
And second?
Second.
Second?
May I ask for a friendly amendment? Go ahead. Don't we include H7?
No.
No?
You can't include that.
You weren't, okay, we'll-
That's why it's different.
We have to, we have to have another reading of that.
That one requires three readings?
I didn't get the first reading, correct?
It was in the first round, yes.
It was, David, this is the whole second, pardon the outline.
I thought we were going to help us out.
Pardon the outline and the plans, all second, second readings.
We were, we actually, we were off a little bit because of the request that Kurt made last time around the red strike, so when I developed this agenda, I assumed we were going to do a second reading for all of those other policies, from which we didn't really have to. So now we're in sync with the parent involvement. You've done two, one was in August, this was the second reading, we're good.
We're good for all. All, so you're friendly amendment-
So that would be up to George if you want to-
Yes.
Definitely, remember.
Go ahead.
Accepted.
Yeah, okay, all right, great.
Okay, any other discussion? And so we have a motion on the floor with a friendly amendment to include H7 as the-
I thought I, somebody said it, because I would have offered it, no one else was interested.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right? Member-to-member agreement of the Boys' Ice Hockey.
So I'm assuming the board is familiar with the process?
Quite.
Yes.
Every year.
Every year?
Every year. Eight times a year. My only, my only question is, has the lawyer looked at it?
Thank you, George.
No, I did not have a lawyer look at this, I, I assumed that this is a member-to-member agreement that has been in use for quite a while, so I did not have legal counsel to do it.
I'm uncomfortable with adopting it without getting their blessing.
It is, I, I, do we need to-
I understand your uncomfortableness, but it's been common practice to prove it without a lawyer's look.
Do we need to get a motion up to it, so we can top this up?
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, discussion.
And then basically, the agreement just says that, you know, that we're going to follow the policies of the receiving school. So if you're uncomfortable now, should we have lawyers look at the last meat agreements? Or?
I just have a question for the administration, I wonder if this is a template that's being used by the Vermont Principals Association?
It is, exactly.
So I, I, you can assume it's been vetted, if it's, if it's a template that's widely used through the association.
I, I, I will vote to support it, but I just want to say that it, as I read it every year, I find that it's poorly written, and I find that this year it just really struck me a bit particularly poorly written. Seeing procedure baked within a member-to-member agreement is a little weird, considering that we're now putting procedure in the hands of the administration, not board, so, anyway. But you know, the out clause is there, so if there's a financial issue and we can't support it, we're able to be out, so. And I know we have students that are wanting to play, right?
We do.
And it's go time?
Right, it is.
So, oh, sorry.
Yes, yes.
So two, one suggestion and one question. The suggestion is there's no date on this, it should have a date before it's executed by us. The second is it refers to a cost and just some confirmation that our extracurricular budget is in some-
We don't bear the cost, it's borne by the family.
And in years past, can I? In years past, Middlebury Hockey has, they've got a booster club that's supported the program, I think even our boosters have also supported the program.
They pitch in a portion of the cost.
So the board has never been in a position of having to support this in the same way that we're not in a position of having to support the football? But that's entirely self-centered as well.
I think students know it's understood when they go elsewhere for sports that is not part of the Virgin's Union High School.
Thank you.
It does say the responsibility of the sending school to pay compensation.
And there's also an out clause in there, right? That says if we don't have the money, we don't have to pay. It's definitely there, because, because that was the deal, so that happened.
Couldn't it be on the pass?
I remember watching Chris Bristow battle with a Middlebury person on that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? Let's vote, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So, I'm just going to- Go ahead. What they're saying, since this is something that we do repetitively, is this something that can be done that is, that doesn't need repeated voting, because it's not, with, with both aspects, my understanding is, nothing is coming out of the school district for this, right? Because parents, booster clubs are paying for this. Why is it hiding that we need to approve every year? I'm, I'm, I'm asking.
It's part of the Vermont Principals Association.
Is it? Okay, all right, I didn't know that, I just was wondering.
Yeah, VPAN, the school, offering school, Middlebury wants to be able to say, this is working, we'll do it again, or this isn't working, we'll do it again.
Oh, I'm not saying, that's not what I'm saying, is I, I, obviously, I'm not saying that Middlebury couldn't say no, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, we need to labor over and each year, but apparently, apparently it is. Thank you, I didn't know this was something I was saying.
It's about as quick as it's ever been this year.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you.
Actually, this is the last year that we need to move to Middlebury, because this is the last, they decided several years ago that they were not going to allow Virgin's Union High School students to play, because they have enough upcoming, people need to do this today. They have enough upcoming students, and so he's looking for other schools that have hockey programs, because we have younger students who would like to play. There's one senior this year that was playing on the Middlebury team, he took the last one.
Oh, so it's only, there's only one, it's not five, it's one, and so other kids who want to play hockey who are below that classroom won't be.
They're not going to-
Not for Middlebury.
Yeah.
Like, so Pete, Pete's looking for other schools that are willing to have a member to members of the student community to play.
Laurie, I have a question.
And then what I was going to say after that, there are other schools, and there have, are other schools that are going, have been going to Middlebury, but won't be able to serve up to other schools, they may not be as close. So there will be a, a, a wee sign, it's like dating it.
Absolutely, yes, thank you very much. All right, discussion items. I wanted to make sure to formally congratulate Lynn Kate Hart as the UVM Teacher of the Year and October-
October 21st, I believe it's in my internal report. The education will go to board chair, but anyone who's invited to attend that event, and I, you haven't gotten our invitation yet, so I can't confirm the time, it's usually around 2:30, 3:00 in the afternoon.
It's usually, is it in Montpelier or is that?
It's actually, this year it's going to be at the Davis Center.
Great. Can you, can you tell us a little bit, and does, do we have a Teacher of the Year award?
Sure. This is an award that's available to all school districts in the state of Vermont, because we have a Supervised Reunion, they have allotted us two spots every year, one from the elementary and one from seven through 12. And at the elementary level, we just rotate, so this year it was Fairsburg's turn, and what I do is I seek nominations, and I ask for some examples why this individual is an exemplary educator, and Stephanie did a little bit of a new twist, I think, last year, you asked for the student feedback?
Well, I'm trying to proceduralize it here, because it had been done differently every time, so.